Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Heavenly Father, if we can all bow, we come to you with heavy hearts with where our nation's at today, a divided nation. Father, yesterday, we saw an assassination, we hear of other children, they're getting targeted. We want to protect our children in our county as well, Father. But Father, today, we come to you and ask you to heal this land. We ask you for a man that professes faith in Christ, as I do, that we pray for this nation to come back together again, of all things, of everybody. We can disagree, but let's do it in a civil manner. We pray to you, guide us for that, Father. We pray for our first responders 24 years ago, 25 years ago, came together and ran towards that terrible, terrible assault on our country, and they gave their lives, many lives, have been given since then, and fighting against terrorism. And Father, we just, we pray for this nation, this nation of liberty and freedom that you gave us so many years ago, be 250 years next year. So Father, today, we join together to become as one, to set our differences, not so much aside, but how we handle our differences, and come together and make it, to make this nation a better place. We thank you so much, for your Son, Jesus Christ in me, for his hope of eternity. Thank you so much, Father. We pray for this country today.
All right, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will call this meeting to order. Before we start, I just want to say, you're seeing pictures up there, I'm sure, of 9/11, which we have referred to. 24 years ago, and you're right, Doug, the country changed, and it changed yesterday. It continues to change. And the trouble with society today is, we can't agree to disagree. We've decided that trying to kill a messenger gets rid of the message. Well, it doesn't, never has. It hasn't since they hung Jesus on the cross. Now, take that for what it is. Everybody probably in this room can remember where they were on 9/11. It's one of those events in life you'll never forget. And Bob, if you don't mind, just share a little bit of your insight as to where you were at, what was taking place? Our Public Safety Director was, I believe you were Chief in Oneonta at the time, correct?
That's correct. I was part chief in the city of Oneonta at the time, and you're absolutely correct. It's one of those days that I will never forget what I was doing, and most of people that had a direct experience with any of this stuff feel the same way. It's like the day that Kennedy was shot and all that stuff. You know exactly what they were life-changing, life-altering experiences. When the planes hit the tower on this particular 9/11, 24 years ago, I personally was not in the firehouse. We were doing travels, we had fire officers that were being trained down in the city. I had a captain that was on the rock for first-line supervisor training down there at the time of this event, and the station was doing station life. So I wasn't in the station when this event started. I was at home, like, one of the captain on duty called, he said, "Chief, are you watching TV?" I said, "No, I'm busy with doing stuff." He said, "Turn on TV." And, "Oh, by the way, come to the station." So I started to pick up what I was doing and clean up, and I'm watching on the television the first plane had hit before I got my stuff picked up and changed my clothes to go into work. The second plane hit, my phone rang at that point from a really good friend that was, had retired out of Rescue 3 in the city, and he said, "Hey, Barnesy, we're going to New York, and I need you to get your stuff together." So at the time, I was teaching Rescue Ops for the state of New York, and threw my gear in the driveway, and before I got back in the house, the phone rang again, it was my mayor, and she said, "Come to City Hall right now." And the governor of New York at that point had contacted the cities and was concerned about infrastructure and the water systems and all the other stuff, the secondary points of attack, they were unsure what was going to happen. So New York was out of the question for me. I spent the next three days in the city of City, and we got our captain back out of New York. They put him to work on the pile the first day, and Tommy called up and they said, "You got to get me back home." He said, "This is, I can't do this down here, and I have family up there." So we got him back, and he went back down to New York afterwards and finished his training and stuff. Of the people that died, of the 383 firefighters that died, I had talked with more than a handful, had befriended more than a handful in the Rescue 3 station, ended up at 13 different funerals in the next four months. So, again, it's one of those events that we'll never forget.
Well, the guy that went down and worked on the pile, because my dad had cancer, and we were down there just after, in fact, he was on the phone when the first plane was slow carrying, when the first plane hit the tower, and they hung up. Did he get sick from that?
He didn't get sick, but he's in that cadre of people that are being monitored, so he's doing that, and several of the other instructors from the state were deployed down there, and I know, like, watched three of them, but there's several more that are still in that process of being tested, and have to go down annually to, I can't remember the hospital, but go down someplace and be tested for respiratory illness and cancers and so on and so on.
I had a friend.
And just as a backside, just saying, of the 3,000 and some odd people that died on today, we have surpassed that number of those that were impacted by this event through breathing the air and stuff, in deaths since that time. So in the last 24 years or more, 3,000 additional people died as a result of it.
So I had a friend, Don Hoffman, who was in one of the towers, and he was going down and the firemen were going up the stairs, and his, maybe next year, he would come and speak. It's chilly to listen to Don, and then the bodies jumping out of the, I think Congress should have that on every wall down there, never forget, not to let our guard down again, because of the horrific stuff. But then Frank Tiller was on television this morning, talking about his brother and the firefighters kind of echoing, you know, you brought up something that I remember, because any of us who pay attention to world events, the terror attack, because they tried to blow four floors out of it long before that, little trade center, if you remember, and so it wasn't a surprise, they hit it again, but the velocity they hit it with was incredible. But I forgot that we're about to worry about water supply for New York. I forgot about that.
They shut the bridges down, damn around the city, isolated that, but everything upstate, which was certainly rock state, was all on high alert, all the way from, you know, all the Newburgh, we ended up with our people in Newburgh, our rescue crew in Newburgh, had three ALS, AMOCS crews in the rig on the pile for 3, 4 hours, but they did too much. But anyway, all of that upstate area was, to be honest, put that in a state of emergency about high alert, and it was a shock.
Salvation Army sent a team down there, and they did, they, just a biblical description of a public servant, they washed the feet of people and cleaned their feet, and it was just a horrible, horrible day, but we can never forget, that's for sure, for letting our guard down.
So, anyway.
Thank you, Bob. And just as another note to this whole 9/11, it was months after that happened, I happened to have been on a business trip, and I went to Shanksville within months of where that plane, Flight 93, went down. I revisited that a few weeks ago, I was actually at a conference out there, which you guys were out too, and we took a trip out to Shanksville, to the memorial that's there now, and I will tell you, you can't walk through that, you can't be near that without it becoming emotional. You can actually listen to the voices of the people on the plane, talking to their family members as they're going down. And when you look at what happened to those people, that will change forever. Those people are still there. There's a rock out in the middle of the field that designates where they are.
So to that, I had a friend, and there was an eyewitness account of that, of the plane before it went down, how low it was, and it was, it's just eerie, it's horrible.
Anyway, all right. Thank you for our indulgence. All right, are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Yes, Walter Woods. Considering everything that was just mentioned, your resolution 2025-24, I hope you have actual debate on that and discuss increasing the amount from 10,000. The responders in this area don't have enough funds, they're struggling, and the county has the Act 13 money that should be put towards this more than pretty much anything else. They need help, 10,000 isn't a lot, and I hope you actually discuss this in considering increasing the amount needed to respond to her. Thank you.
All right, unfinished business, consider approving the minutes of August 28, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. New business. Before we get started, while I make a motion, I'll ask for a motion to add an agenda item that we need to put on there because of the nature of what this is. Consider approving a cooperative agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Human Services, or DHS, and the Domestic Relations Sections of the Court of Common Pleas, and the County Commissioners of Bradford County to administer and optimize the effectiveness and performance of Title 4D Child Support Enforcement Program.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second to add this to the agenda. Are there any comments?
Just to clarify for Maine, this is like an administrative oversight, right? This isn't asking for money for a grant, this is essentially an agreement to do administrative oversight.
And it's actually between the State Office of Department of Human Services, not my office, and domestic.
Domestic relations. I'm sorry.
No, but when I read it, I thought, what am I doing?
Yeah, no.
And then I had to clarify.
It's domestic relations.
Yes.
What kind of administrative oversight?
It's not my office, states, I can't answer.
You can call Yvonne over in domestic relations.
There's no county expenditures, right? The state expenditures?
That's what I'm asking. I don't believe that there's any expenditures related to this, it's just.
We'll get the information from James.
Vonda could answer exactly what it is. All right, we've, all in favor of adding it to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously now. We'll vote on the motion that's been added, consider approving a cooperative agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Human Services and the Domestic Relations Section, DRS, of the Court of Common Pleas and the Commissioners of Bradford County, to administer and optimize the effectiveness and performance of the Title 4D Child Support Enforcement Program.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to second, is there any further discussion?
And just to clarify, I think this is the type of agreement we have done in past years. So this is not a new agreement.
No. All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now, consider proclaiming the month of September 2025 as Suicide Awareness Month in Bradford County. And Gwen, we'll read the proclamation for us, if you would.
I can stand here or?
Wherever, if you want to come up here.
Come right up here, boys.
Wherever you feel comfortable.
My understanding that you paid out of your own pocket for all the decorations that we have.
No, no, I did not, on the main link.
Okay.
Yes, no, I worked with them.
We appreciate you in the main link, making it outside this courthouse for suicide prevention, making it very noticeable, thank you. But I wore it.
Whereas in 2023, suicide was the 11th leading cause of death overall in the United States and the second leading cause of death among individuals aged 10 to 34 years. Whereas in the United States in 2023, over 49,316 individuals died by suicide. Whereas suicide rates increased approximately 36% in the United States from 2000 to 2023. Whereas in 2023, an estimated 12.8 million adults aged 18 years or older reported having serious thoughts of suicide, and 1.5 million adults attempted suicide in the past year. Whereas in 2023, 2 in 10 high school students seriously considered attempting suicide, and almost 1 in 10 high school students reported that they made at least one suicide attempt in the past year. Whereas between February 2024 and January of 2025, Pennsylvania reported a suicide rate of 14.2 per 100,000. Whereas between February 2024 and January of 2025, Bradford County reported a suicide rate of 20.1 per 100,000. Whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and potentially treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. Whereas the burden of suicide is estimated to cost over $510 billion in medical, work loss, value of system, statistical life, and quality of life costs initial. Whereas the negative attitudes associated with mental health conditions and suicidal thoughts and behaviors work against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help and further traumatize survivors of suicide loss and people with lived experience of suicide. Whereas if someone can get through the intense and short moment of an active suicidal crisis, they are unlikely to die from suicide ultimately. Whereas asking someone directly if they're thinking about suicide will not put the idea in their head, and most will be relieved someone starts a conversation. Whereas most people who survive a suicide attempt, 85 to 95%, go on to engage in life. Whereas everyone has a role to play in preventing suicide and can learn about suicide risks and warning signs and encourage those who struggle to seek help. Whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention envision a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide. Through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or struggle themselves, an urge that we, one, recognize suicide as a preventable nation, national and state public health problem, and declare suicide prevention to be a priority; two, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities; three, encourage initiatives based on the goals contained in the 2025 National Strategy for Suicide Prevention; and four, promote awareness that there's no single cause for suicide, that suicide is complex, that risk may increase for a person when multiple contributors, mental health conditions, substance use and physical health conditions, pain, past trauma, converge in the context of stress, and that when a person has access to lethal means, they may die by suicide. Five, develop and implement strategies to increase access to and deliver, and delivery of quality mental health, substance use, and suicide prevention crisis care and treatment and recovery services. Therefore, be it resolved, we as Bradford County Commissioners do proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Awareness Month in Bradford County.
Thank you, Gwen. I second the motion as well.
So Gwen, you said a 20 out of 100 thousand in Bradford County?
Yes.
Just do the math on that. That's a lot. I mean, we got, we're just over 60,000 people, so we could just dump it in half, that's 10 people, that touches basically everybody in this room, right? It's touched me over my life.
That's right.
So I appreciate what you do, and I think that, you know, we've talked about it before, you had the fellow that jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge, you know, God bless you, if you can, not everybody has signs, I don't think, right? It's a tough, and we appreciate you very much, what you're doing, the awareness that, although you might not catch it, but everybody should, somebody's time in need, just be awful mindful and thoughtful of that person. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider proclaiming the month of September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in Bradford County, and I will read the proclamation. I'll get a sticky note off of it. Hunger Action Month Proclamation. Whereas hunger and food insecurity are issues of vital concern in Pennsylvania, where according to Feeding America, over 1.5 million individuals, or 1 in 8 Pennsylvanians and 1 in every 6 children, experience food insecurity. In Bradford County, 1 in 8 neighbors and 1 in 6 children are food insecure. And whereas adequate nutritious food has become an expensive and out-of-reach for many neighbors with food costs increasing more than 27%, leading to record demand for charitable food. And whereas food insecurity, the condition of limited or uncertain access to adequate food, is associated with numerous adverse social and health outcomes and is critical to public, it is a critical public health issue. And whereas Bradford County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every corner of our communities and provide additional resources to those in need. And whereas Bradford County is committed to working with the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank to educate people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas Central Pennsylvania Food Bank distributed over 68.5 million pounds of food in fiscal year 2025 to Pennsylvanians experiencing food insecurity. In Bradford County alone, over 2.1 million pounds of food were distributed. And whereas public and private entities, including policymakers, business leaders, community activists, farmers, and concerned citizens, and hunger relief organizations must collectively work to address food insecurity within the Commonwealth. And whereas, the month of September has been designated nationwide as Hunger Action Month to raise awareness of the issue of hunger and mobilize our legislature and the public to help end hunger in America, therefore be it resolved. Now therefore, we, the Bradford County Commissioners, do hereby recognize September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in Bradford County, Pennsylvania, and I call this call, this observance, to the attention of our citizens.
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, my daughter, who I'm pretty proud of, real proud of actually, she works in, I'm trying to think the name of it, I talk to her about it all the time, in Donna National in North Carolina, they supplied food for people during the, after the terrific Hurricane Helene that went through there. What they do is they, like restaurants and catering facilities will keep their food all safe, they'll keep it to temperature, and Marisha, they have a food truck that's right in, they'll take it, they'll repackage it, and then they'll get it out to needy people. It's a big undertaking, it's quite a, it's a nonprofit, they have to raise money, but what she does is incredible work, I'm very proud of her for what she does. But the food insecurity thing, you know, you kind of don't know really, what children, I know Chop, I never realized that through drug addiction, some people are selling their food stamps, and the kids, the kids who want to pay the price, always, right? But anyway, thank you very much for reading that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just also note that, you know, part of this is to raise awareness and to also, you know, raise awareness about the importance of SNAP benefits, the importance of the WIC program, which are two governmental programs that do help to bridge the gap. So again, encouraging those to continue to be expanded and to be promoted. And lastly, understand, we've talked about the budget impasse down in Harrisburg. Again, you know, the longer that goes on, the harder it is for very meritorious programs that do help bridge the need to be delayed. So I really encourage everybody to learn about those issues and also learn about how these delays are going to potentially affect those in most need within our communities.
All right. It's a good point, that budget impasse is leaving a lot of vulnerable people out to dry. Hang them right out to dry, this is ridiculous what they're doing.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider proclaiming the week of September 8 through the 12th, 2025, as Direct Support Professional Week in Bradford County, and Kaylee Connor will read the proclamation for us.
I can have help here.
That's all right.
That is pretty cool.
Absolutely.
Whereas direct support professionals are integral to the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of all individuals with intellectual, developmental, and other disabilities, regardless of their age. And whereas a direct support professional assists an individual with disabilities daily with the most intimate needs and provides a broad range of support from preparing meals and medications to personal care, to transporting clients, to school, to work, and other activities. And whereas the assistance that direct support professionals provide allows individuals with disabilities to help maintain connections with their friends, family, and community while enabling them to lead fulfilling lives. And whereas direct support professionals build close, respectful, and trusted relationships with the individuals they serve. And whereas the participation of direct support professionals in medical care planning is critical to the successful management of medical events, post-acute care, and long-term support and services. And whereas the direct support professionals community encapsulates a multitude of professions, including but not limited to direct care workers, personal attendants, in-home support workers, and paraprofessionals, all of which are an equal role in providing long-term support and services for millions of individuals with disabilities. And whereas direct support professionals have worked tirelessly, tirelessly, largely, to support individuals with disabilities, and their dedication will continue to make the Commonwealth an inclusive and safe place for all. Therefore, we, the Bradford County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 7 through the 13 as Direct Support Professionals in Bradford County, Pennsylvania. And we encourage all Bradford County citizens to recognize and appreciate the dedication and contributions that these providers make to enhance the lives of their clients.
I'll put a round of applause.
Great job, great job. Very well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the proclamation as read, I move to consider proclaiming the week, or move to proclaim the week of September, I'm sorry, September 7 through the 13th, 2025, as Direct Support Professionals Week in Bradford County.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion?
Well, other than pretty unbelievable people that work, you know, our hearts are always with people with disabilities, they should be first up for anything that we can do. Thank you for coming in and reading it, thank you for reading it today, and everybody here, but they're underpaid, folks. Maine, incredible work that they do. And not only the incredible work that they do, but the incredible care that they give these special people, very special people, and our kind of people. Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider proclaiming the week of September 14th through the 20th, 2025, as National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in Bradford County, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas more than 59 million American adults cannot read, write, or do basic math above a third grade level, as well as lack the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in a career or post-secondary education. And whereas 75% of state incarcerated individuals did not complete high school or can be classified as low literate. And whereas workers who have less education than a high school diploma make three times less than workers with the highest level of education. And whereas adult education programs such as the Bradford County, Bradford Wyoming County Literacy Program contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for a career or post-secondary education. And whereas incarcerated individuals who participate in adult education programs are 43% less likely to recidivate than inmates who did not. And whereas these programs offer low or no cost, high value opportunities which upgrade the skill set of our citizens. And whereas the Bradford Wyoming County Literacy Program celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Education and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their education options to attain their professional and personal goals. We now therefore, the Bradford County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week, proclaim that September 14th, 2025, through September 20th, 2025, be designated as National Adult Basic Education and Family Literacy Week in Bradford County.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
Boy, it seems like I got something for everything today, but so many in my life I'm very proud of, it was Lena Manning, 75 years old, she's in the literacy program, working like, like crazy to learn to read, and she's, she's just an inspiration, so there's no, we're not too young or too old to get involved in this, I'm pretty proud of her and all the hard work that she's doing. Just want to give her a shout out, because when I see this, I think of, I think of hers millions. But incredible number though, when you look at a country of 330 million people, that, how many million was it? 69 million or something like that?
59. I think I would also just note what was stated by Commissioner Miller. The statistic pursuant to this proclamation is that incarcerated individuals who participate in adult education programs are 43% less likely to recidivate, meaning to reoffend, than inmates who did not. And that is the statistic that stands out to me, and so the work that is done in our correctional facility is, it's not only the right thing to do, but it is a fiscally responsible thing to do.
All right, we have a motion to second. I'll just add, and it's a cliche, but it's as true as the sun coming up tomorrow morning, reading is fundamental to almost everything you do. The ability to read and comprehend what you read is, is fundamental to almost every other aspect of life. And, you know, anything we can do to help promote the additional education of, of our citizenry, our neighbors, our friends, the more it's going to help us all in the long run, and help them. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-23 to allocate donation under Act 13 for volunteer emergency responders.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, and I will read the proclamation, not proclamation, resolution. Whereas Bradford County Commissioners recognize that the development of natural gas has created dramatic changes for our emergency responders. Our volunteers are presented with constantly increasing call volumes, the purchase of new equipment and more training, and yet their resources continue to be strained. Whereas in accordance with Section 2314G of Act 13, money can be distributed for emergency preparedness and public safety issues, public safety services. Now therefore, we, Bradford County Commissioners of Pennsylvania, do hereby resolve the effective, that effective this 11th day of September 2025, a donation in the amount of $10,000 will be distributed to all volunteer fire departments and EMAs, EMS departments that currently service Bradford County to be used only for the purposes allowed under Act 13 as stated herein. Now witness herefore, and I will say that we have distributed probably over $4 million, four and a half million dollars, I'm guessing, to our fire departments and EMS services within Bradford County, and we're also anticipating, which is a budgetary issue that we're going to be discussing, but we're also discussing adding to that significantly for our EMS services to help them strengthen and facilitate enhancing EMS services throughout the county, because they are struggling tremendously.
So we also, just as a side note, we, you know, we don't do it on a regular basis, but we have funded our police officers with request over the years on many different things. And recently had Governor Corbett, who it was his idea to do the impact fee, and we had him up to our comm center, and Governor Corbett has since told me that he couldn't, he couldn't absorb everything we've done. So the $75 million that we've gotten over the years, we've taken three quarters of it and put it right back into our first responders, our public safety, you know, to enhance what they do, be it towers, be it broadband, be it burnt buildings, be it our 911 center, be all the different things that we've done. He was just blown away, and he could not absorb it all. He never realized that this county, over the years, has shown great support for our first responders.
So Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I mean, obviously, I am the newest member of this board, so educate me, how many years have we been making the donation?
Since 2013 or 14, I believe.
So we're talking now, this would be the 12, approximately the 12th year. On top of that, obviously, there was discussion of the infrastructure that was put in place in terms of radio communications and our 911 center.
And burn building.
And that's where I was going, is, so, you know, one of the, one of the largest costs that goes for, understand that there's only a handful of paid services, the multitude of our first responders in the county are volunteer. And one of the biggest costs is training. That's why having a burned building is incredibly important. Having, in our case, Greg Jelliffe, who coordinates our training at the county level, is, is a, is a huge cost savings. So while it might not look like a direct dollar going to a particular department, it is, in the aggregate, extremely helpful to all of these. To your point, Commissioner Miller, I mean, the, the manner in which in a future budget, money could be allocated for additional work, obviously, we're going to have to look at that at, at budget time, but it could, you know, it could take a variety of, of whether it's a direct grant, whether it's some type of a match, a municipality could provide funding up to a certain level. Imagine you could do something like that. So I look forward to the conversations, but I also want to credit what has already been You know, Act 13, too, this year, the allocation we were informed that we would receive in July, or that we were informed in July that we would receive, that is less money than what we have received in the past years. So while certainly it will look like a big number, as we work through our budget and as we work through other obligations for which we use our Act 13 money, I'm glad that we're continuing this program, I'm glad that we're looking at other options. But just understand that direct grants of money, it's not always as simple as just direct dollars, because sometimes monies are expended on things that benefit multiple departments. I hope I haven't misstated anything.
Well, no, but to add to that, I mean, the importance of our dark fiber project. And, you know, and I don't know if it, I looked, I don't know if the Daily, I don't know if the Rockets, I haven't read anything, but we would like to give credit to Scott Wagner, introducing us to Senator Christian Phillips.
Christian Phillips Hill.
You know, one of the reasons Scott got us one-on-one with the senator, she was on the beat, and if you guys want to understand what the beat committee was, but Senator Hill, through Scott, got all that money. And why, why did that come here? Not because we're good people, it's because our commitment to public safety, our commitment to dark fiber project being on cutting edge, you know, doing that. Why is dark fiber important for public safety? Well, towers, we're adding towers, you cannot do Starlink on towers, you've got to have glass going to towers. So we've increased the amount of towers. You know, it's all got high-speed internet going to the towers. What does that mean? We're going to be able to sit down, which we already have, and talk to more cell phone providers, which helps safety, to get it out into the rural parts of our county. And I know, I know, I know that Senator Hill didn't do it for credit, but I hope you guys give her credit. You know, she's from York County, but through a relationship with Scott Wagner and an introduction that he put out, how, what Bradford County has done, is the reason we got to focus, and $75 million later coming north, you know, to, which we really, I think, we pretty much, that's going to, that's going to complete our project here in Bradford, the 25 million or whatever we get. So again, you know, in politics, sometimes it's about the relationships you build, it's about the people, but more importantly, it's about what you do with what you get and respect you get throughout state. And I just want to thank her personally, again, it didn't get reported to Senator Hill. You know, we, we went down and met with her, and a lot of times they kick you off to AIDS, okay? That's not the case. Senator Wagner, that was his seat, he made sure that we talked to her, and he prepped her on what we'd done, and just, it's just, it's just a really team effort of what's going on in this county from all different, a lot of different aspects.
The only other clarification I would make is, is that, understand that under this resolution, the money is going to all volunteer fire departments and EMAs that currently, services under its, for the MS. So the EMS services that currently service Bradford County.
Either as a primary responding unit, or there's also an allocation for those that do it as a mutual aid response.
Understand that we have certain parts of our county that are served by entities that are actually outside of our county, whether that's Sullivan or Tioga, Wyoming or Lycoma.
Yep.
So we appreciate that as well, just as a point of clarification.
All right, we have a motion to second. I'll just add, we have a fire chief's wife in here that can attest to the number of hours that, that firemen go through to train to do what they do. Lot of nights not home, right?
More nights away than not home.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you for your sacrifice.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Chris Jones Esquire, serving as solicitor in Court of, fourth, and the Court of Common Pleas of Bradford County, Domestic Relations Section, to provide legal services to the Domestic Relations Section.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Bradford County Sheriff's Department and the Court of Common Pleas of Bradford County, Domestic Relations Section, to provide law enforcement duties on behalf of the Domestic Relations Section.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Richard McCoy Esquire, serving as the hearing officer and the Court of Common Pleas of Bradford County, Domestic Relations Section, to provide legal services for conflict cases to the Domestic Relations Section.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and the Court of Common Pleas of Bradford County, the Domestic Relations Section, and John Thompson Esquire, serving as private contractor, to provide legal services to the Domestic Relations Section.
Make the motion.
Second, and just for clarification, because we had also approved Chris Jones, my understanding is Mr. Thompson would provide in instances of conflict, or there was overload, he would be in there.
Yeah, they just have to have different orders.
Correct.
Yep. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County, Bradford County Domestic Relations, the Court of Common Pleas of Bradford County, and the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services to provide a hearing officer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Ring Central to provide telecommunications services to Bradford, to the Bradford County Courthouse and other county buildings effective September 1st, 2025, for a 65-month term. That's actually our phone service, so. Our phones and our interconnection with all the phones, this is what that is.
And make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
I just want to understand or help the, the public understand, so it has been a number of years since the phone system within the county has been upgraded. And so I want to credit our IT team, and particularly Lily, for the work that was done to help look through what potential options are and, and make a recommendation for us, because the hope is that this will modernize our telephone systems and allow for greater efficiency and functionality of those within the courthouse and in our other buildings. So I, I appreciate, it's overdue, and, and hopefully this works out to be a good, good relationship.
And I believe there were certain parts of it that weren't even serviceable anymore, some of the new old system, so. Anyway, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the 2025-2026 Medical Assistance Transportation Program, initial allocation in the amount of $2,5200.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Gates, how is this budget impasse affecting BEST? Do you sit on the board?
Well, it's funny you should say that, because I received an email, it was copied on an email, from Brian Hoffman, who is the Chair of the Sullivan County Commissioners. Mr. Hoffman shared an email to, that was directed to, I believe, our elected officials at the state level. So this would have been Representative Hamm, Representative Owlet, Representative Pickett, and Senator Yaw. So again, the representatives and the senators who cover the three counties, Bradford, Sullivan, and Tioga, that make up the best, or coverage for the BEST system. And this was, this is going to get very hairy in the next few months if we don't have some type of a resolution. And it's not just for BEST, but it's for all of your transit systems across the state. And understand that if you don't have a functional public transit system, that is what's going to really affect those of the most limited means within our county, who are some of the highest users of our BEST system. And right now, BEST is having, I mean, none of this is, is a secret, it's all, you know, been discussed in public meetings, but, you know, there's, there's a need to dip into a line of credit, there's, which of course, at some point, you can't do it. So as long as there are delays in state funding, these, so, you know, the MATP program, all of these medical assistance runs that are done, whether it's through a fixed route or whether it's through a shared ride, do get affected. And again, I hope that there will be some type of an impasse that gets broken, because it's, it's going to continue to be very present in the lives of our most, our most needy residents of Bradford County.
So you could also mirror that right to the county government. So you could also mirror that right to the county government function in general of having to probably borrow money to get through this. It's pretty serious what they do to us. And, again, we've heard from none of them. I don't think you reported that either last time. I think it's our, you know, these are people putting a burden on us. They need to, you should come here, sit down, and just help us where they think all this budget impasse. They're asking us to do an awful lot with nothing. Right there's a magician name that's running services that most needy people in our county is, uh, it's going to get, it's going to get pretty real here soon, isn't it?
We haven't received any money from the state.
For this, for, for the 25, 26 fiscal year?
Since July.
That started July 1.
Yeah, special needs people.
We usually get our allocation July, August for mental health disabilities, children and youth, early intervention.
I think we're still at about five, six million.
I wish Dan were here to tell us the number.
We are, through children.
Oh, children and youth specifically.
But, but the general fund is covered.
Oh, yeah.
It's about five or six million. Remember, that's on $11 million that, that we collect in property taxes to operate the essential services of county government. We have a $6 million hole out of that. That's, that's bad.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the hires and transfers. Some Danielle Funk down through and including Krista Aberish.
So moved.
Aye.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. In other business, an executive session was held on September 8th from 10:20 a.m. to 10:40 a.m. to discuss the terms and conditions of employment, of employment of current employees. And an executive session was held on September 9th from 9:30 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. with legal counsel to discuss Bradford County case number 2024-I-R-0087, and to review and discuss agency business subject to the attorney-client privilege.
I believe there's still sunshine violation out for...
Duly noted. I just, all right, salary board.
Can I, I'm not done speaking, sir.
I do want to hear what you...
Yes, you are done.
No, I'm not.
You are done.
There...
Sir, you're done.
You had chosen to allocate...
You are done. We're moving on.
Other law firm.
Salary board.
In July, but you haven't told us about any executive session.
You want to, you want to push the button.
I'm doing what I'm legally obligated, permitted to do. You are obligated to listen.
Salary board. New business, set the salaries and grades from Danielle Funk down through including Krista, duly noted.
No public period.
Krista Aberish.
Make that motion for the...
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
It's my...
Assessment board, unfinished business. There is none.
Sunshine violation.
Duly noted. New business, consider approving the following for tax exemption, and that is Joseph Wisneski, I believe. It's a veteran's exemption, and it is new.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Second. Any further?
Thanks for coming, folks.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you everyone.
Great job.
Yep, absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
So, so what's that, what's that young man's name getting the, that list of visitors caught, uh, for me, please? What's, what's his name before you go?
His name is Benjamin.
Benjamin, thank you for coming.
Uh, James.
James.
I forgot to get my name on there. Could I put it on, please?
Yeah.
All right. I forgot to get my name on there. Could I get my name on there, please?
Go ahead.
It's only permitted with your friends. Wait, did we have?
They already read the pro forma statements.
Well, I mean, I, I don't have a problem if somebody wants to talk.
Yeah, we're either going to go by the rules that we set, or we're not going to, and that's, I mean, we're going to keep playing these games. I'm not going to play games. We either set the rules or we don't set. And I'm, excuse me, you're done. Now, James?
Um, so you're, just to be sure, you said that, that the county will probably have to borrow money?
Yeah. That's an, that's what we're anticipating. It's the potential of we're going to have to borrow money to cover the ongoing costs.
We have no idea. We have nothing. We don't know what the anticipated, if there is anticipated settlement date on a budget, where they'll pass it, you know, what the holdups are. So, James, it's just, that could be a reality.
But when do you, when do you expect, how long would the budget impasse continue to, when you would actually...
We don't know that threshold just yet, but we're constantly evaluating through our fiscal department when, and our treasurer's office as to when we will need to reach out to...
I believe we did get a couple, a couple million dollars back on the CYS, which, which helps us. So it's, it's things like that that are going to prolong it or could speed it up if we don't get some reimbursement back. It's not easy. And that, uh, our treasurer and our Dan Thorpe are magicians to keep this county running when, you know, I mean, we already got our property taxes and everything in, but it's, it's the, it's the human services and a lot of different things that we're, and use county funds to keep operating.
James?
It's not only the punch in the budget, it's also the interest that goes, wait, wait, because we might get interest out of the money.
Mr. Chairman, here's the concern that, and just, I think you've heard this same strain through all of what my fellow commissioners have said. But here's the frustration that I have. When we ask questions of, when is it going to get to a point where we'll have to do it? I think that's a fair question, and I'm not trying to shut anybody down. But I almost feel like it's, that's the wrong question. The wrong question is, why are, why is Harrisburg putting us in this situation every few years where we have to be sweating nickels trying to figure out how we're going to do it? Is it, I mean, are they really going to expect that year over year, when we have, we have one lever, and that's taxation? And guess what? County and local taxes, at least in, in, you know, discount value, aren't even due until the end of April. So there's a drag. We have to budget ahead for this. There, as I've said in prior meetings, there are mandates that come down statutorily and regulatorily from Harrisburg that make us do this. I think, what are we going to have to do? Start projecting and setting aside a rainy day fund that we'll call, you know, Harrisburg Can't Get It Together Fund? Every year, in the anticipation that they can't get their act together and work together to come up with something so that counties don't get hurt, so that counties don't have to do lines of credit for interest and accruing interest that presumably they're never going to get paid on, which then falls back down on the taxpayers. This is a truly nonpartisan point of contention. I know my fellow commissioners all share my frustration. I know the commissioners across the Commonwealth and council members across the Commonwealth share my frustration. Because it's not as if come January 1, we have a magical spigot where dollars just start rolling in. So, I mean, look, if we're going to have to start having a, you know, Harrisburg Can't Get It Together Fund, maybe, maybe that's where we're going to have to go. And that's a poor reflection of what I thought the collaborative relationship was between Harrisburg and our counties.
Yeah, and I think something else was reported that was discussed, is that we have crickets coming from our state elected representatives and our senators. Nothing. They don't make an appointment to come in. It's not me to ask. They're, they're putting a burden on us. You know, if we, if we were putting a burden on somebody over underfunding them, we certainly would give them a phone call and say, hey, man, we're really, we're sorry on the side of our control. And it is. I mean, all three of those people are in the minority. But having said that, they, they've got to have, they have to have an understanding, what is the, what is the, what's the tripping point? Where's the contention at? You know, is there, do they get a feel it's going to be, um, some kind of an agreement made, some kind of compromise made? Is there going to be, you know, something, what is? I would like to know what it, I hear, but I don't know. Takes me right off, to be honest with you. To your point.
I'm sorry to...
I'm not sorry.
Get a little heated. It's just...
No, don't be sorry.
So, do, what, how much are you, is the county paying Ring Central over this 65-month term?
I don't have that number right in front of me.
We have the contract.
We can get the contract for you, James. Share that number with you.
And then, then as in past years, you're, in addition to the $10,000, that's going to go to the fire companies and the ambulance companies in Bradford County. You're going to give 20, as you did in the past, you're going to give $2,500 to the...
Yes, just the same, yep, same as we've done, yes.
To the, to the ambulance companies and fire companies that are outside the county?
Yes.
That serve Bradford.
Yep.
So, and there are ambulance...
That provide mutual aid services within the county, yes.
Yeah, because our, our impact fee money's actually gone quite a bit downward the last couple of years. But, you know, as long as we get impact fee money, then, we're going to, but if the impact fee money goes away, we're not going to be able to do it anymore. So it's just important to keep...
Same allocation, same as we've done in years past.
And there are, and there are both fire companies and ambulance companies that are outside the county that do provide mutual aid that would get the $2,500.
Yes. Yep.
And then I didn't... So, yeah, those are all my questions.
I think James covered some of the bigger stuff, but...
He usually does.
Mr. McClinkgo, uh, the situation that you were talking about with Scott Wagner, about when did that take place?
So, it, I could, I could go back to my text message and look, but it was like right before the meeting was set, Harrisburg nearly went down. So in relationship with Scott, he was a senator, and Senator Hill took his position. And he has a great relationship with her. So, and he, and he has a great relationship with us in Bradford County. I mean, he ran for governor. We stayed in contact. He stays active politically. But he, the, you know, what he told her legitimized who we were, what we're doing, and he laid the groundwork to win and to really, and Zach, you've got to admit, it was a terrific meeting. He was a terrific senator. I mean, I walked away, um, with a real appreciation of her. And I didn't know that we got the money allocated. It was kind of interesting that I was mowing the lawn over by the country club, my mom's house, and, and tea came running across the greens and said, you know, we got funded. I, I'd heard rumors, but I didn't know it. But I, I shut the mower off, and I had Senator Hill's, um, cell phone number, called her up, and, and she was very gracious. And she's just, just said, because of what we have done as a county, you know, that's what impressed her. And, so a lot of times, it doesn't come down to one individual action. It comes down to relationships. It comes down to trust. It comes down to familiarity and understanding people. And this time, it paid off. And, you know, I'm thrilled, because now, um, because the county's given quite a bit of money in that dark fiber project. I think that fully funds us to get the project done. And, uh, and by the way, because of the great work that we've done here in our county, you know, Lehigh County got money, Sospina County got money, Solomon County got money, Tioga...
Yeah, we got one.
So, we're pretty, we're pretty happy about that as well.
Let me just put a finer point on that. Um, the, you know, part of our jobs, and whenever I speak to schools, is, you know, I say one of our biggest jobs as commissioners, not only to run the budget, but is also to be advocates and cheerleaders for our county. And in this case, it took the form of having a meeting with a member of the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority to, to educate. Because understand that the rules, there was a seismic shift in the rules that were governing how PBDA was going to review BEAT applications. And that happened in, I believe it was in March, where the regulations got changed from being ones that were effectively, you know, fiber, for lack of a better word, fiber being a preferred technology, to being technology agnostic or neutral. And so, because of that, you had multiple areas of the Commonwealth where, um, low orbiting satellite became the, essentially the most cost-effective, at least on paper. And part of what I think we were able to demonstrate through our application, again, through the hard work of Central Bed Progress Authority, and through that educational initiative that we undertook with not only, you know, Senator Phillips Hill, but, but others, is that our proposal, as, as amended, that was sent out by CBPA, fiber, majority fiber with some areas of fixed wireless, was still the most robust and going to be the best use of allocated dollars for that infrastructure. I encourage you to, I believe it was, I don't know if it was Penn Line, but there was an article recently that talks about counties that, under the BEAT proposal, the one that was submitted to the NTIA at the federal government for final approval, there are counties who are getting predominantly low orbiting satellite. And, you know, people can say Starlink. I'm not trying to, you know, it's not one particular brand or another, but that's the solution. And, read that article and see how commissioners from those counties feel that that's the solution. We talked about it in the last meeting. This is a once-in-a-multi-generational opportunity. We were able to avail ourselves of being able to advocate for and hopefully receive something that is predominantly fiber with some fixed wireless mixed in. That's going to benefit the residents. So, I do think it was a good use of time. It's not about favors. This is about demonstrating to the right people that ours made the most sense, because it does. It does, and it will every day of the week.
Yeah, to echo off that, a couple of things. It is about relationships and trust. It's about, no, because I'll tell you, when you get above Route 80, nobody kind of cares about it. But in this instance, because of relationships and trust and a meeting, you know, to get a chance to go down and tell everybody about what we do, and you always have to remember that while we're doing dark fiber, you can't run our towers off from satellite and stuff. It has to be wired. You know, it has to have the glass going to it. So Dan Muser, our congressman, got us a million, you know, through this office, got a million dollars to go over to keep that dark, I mean, it's, it's been a struggle to keep this going. You know, to get where, I mean, we're on the cutting, and other counties are doing this in Pennsylvania. I don't even know if there's any in the United States to do what we've done. It was taking a full team effort, lit up by the county commissioners, you know, allocating money. Dan, nobody's looking for credit here. But our fiscal director has been a magician on getting, keep, because see, if you, if you stop that dark fiber work, you lose the crews, you're not getting them back in today's environment. You're dead in the water. And we've kept those crews working, and this is just, this is amazing. And again, I would like to thank Scott Wagner, and Senator Hill, and Dan Muser.
And all the members of the PBDA who reviewed the proposals submitted by CBPA and understood the importance of what predominant fiber and some fixed wireless, what that does for our county. So I appreciate all the hard work, and I believe that the earnest review that was undertaken by the PBDA at large and its staff.
Yep.
No. And, uh, the donation to the volunteer fire departments and EMS, so only for Act 13 purposes. Is there a list somewhere of what those Act 13 purposes are?
There's 13 specified.
13 specified. It's section 2314G of Act 13.
Actually, I think you can get it off the PUC website.
All we do, just, just as simple as you, is these people dedicate everything, right? The time, they don't get paid anything. So, the thought was, we first did it, was to give $10,000 to just take a burden off of their fundraising. So all we ask them to do, for auditing purposes for the state, tell us what you use the money for. We're not going out inspecting how complicated is it to get grants from the state. Complicated. This is not complicated. Just use the money for what you're supposed to use it for. Tell us what it is. We'll get you more next year. Pretty simple. And thank them for what they did.
All right, any... No, just, just the last thing, again, you know, this is, this is, I would, I didn't say it at the beginning, but I would echo. Regardless of what one's faith tradition is or lack of faith tradition, um, we are all, uh, we are all Americans, and, uh, I would, again, just hope that on 9/11, we, we revisit what those ideals are that, that unite us as Americans. So I, I, you know, this is a, it's a solemn day. It's a day of remembrance. And, um, urge everybody to not just think about where they were in 2001. For some of our county residents, they weren't even alive in 2001. But understand the significance of what this, um, what this day means. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back to you.
You want to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
First, I mean, I, I'll just share before, before we adjourn, I will just share, reiterate what I said in the beginning, but I'm going to say one other thing. And I'm...
what I said in the beginning, but I'm going to say one other thing, and I'm kind of a history boss, in a way. I will tell you, we, you know, we, we think we're in different times today than we were 249 years ago. Read some of the documents that our founding fathers wrote, they were very passionate about their positions. There were a lot of differences of opinion, there were a lot of differences in what they were looking at and to, to create this nation, they were as passionate as people are today. And yet, they did it in a respectful manner. They were able to share their ideas collectively, disagree, agree, but they were able to do it respectfully to each other, so. Just, I'll leave it there. Yeah, all I had to add, I mean, I, but, just going to tell you that there's been people getting killed for their Christian faith, there's been more of it in the last couple of decades, all the way through history. And it's gotten worse, yesterday was a, yesterday changed the world. All right, we have a motion to second, we're adjourned, but before we're adjourned, we also have a blood drive, so if anybody has some extra blood they want to-
That's happening tomorrow, 10:30 to 3 o'clock.
So if you've got an extra pint or two, you want to, just saying.